So first, thank you all for coming out. We have several things to go over tonight. I know all of you met Sarah Totti. I think she's introduced herself. We are super excited to have her here. Well, that was a welcome addition for us. We've been needing that help for a long time. We just didn't recognize it. It took us about 10 seconds to figure out after we met Sarah that she is perfect for us. So we look forward to having her here. She's probably tired already. We have a lot to do and she's certainly knocking it out for us so far. So we're glad to have her. Secondly, all of these snacks are mine, but you're welcome to have one if you would like. And then we have some soft drinks in the break room. We'll get those out in just a couple of minutes. But before we get into the actual work session topic, which was slopes and percentages and all of those things, that's more the technical side. And I know Kevin and likely Sarah will kind of direct that conversation. But two things I wanted to direct your attention to tonight before we get into that work session part of it. The first is, we had a telephone call, our conference call with the developers from Bellhaven subdivision. That's the large subdivision, the 600-plus lot subdivision that's over on Northwest Highway. We had about a 25-minute phone call with them yesterday for some follow-up regarding some changes they are proposing related to the lots, the type of the lots, the buildings, and some of the elevations of those. And we'll get that information out to all of you, so you'll have time to review that. But they have asked to be on the work session, and we agreed to have them on the work session for a project meeting, as we've talked about having before, and have that presentation at December's Planning Commission meeting. So December's Planning Commission workshop at 5:45 will be Bellhaven to go over all of those changes and discussions. We did not want to have that on an agenda and just have to go through that exercise again. So they'll be here at 5:00 p.m. before the next Planning Commission meeting. The work session will start at 5:45. We'll advertise that they'll be here at 5:00 p.m. So if anyone has any individual questions before we get into the discussion of all of that, they'll be available for that. And certainly, when I send the email out with all of the changes, it will include representatives from Bellhaven subdivision. So if you have specific questions, please feel free to email them. Or if you want to sit down and meet with them to talk about what they're looking to do and learn more about it, they're amenable to do that as too. They've asked that we allow you to make them available. So if there's something you want to see, understand, or meet with them for follow-up, they're welcome to do that or welcoming to do that with you before the next meeting. So when we get that out, just know they're eager to make that proposal and have those discussions with you. And then lastly, before we get into the work session, you have on your agenda tonight a final plat for Fernvale Springs condos, Phase 2, 36 units on 5.46 acres. We need to talk about that one for just a second. This is, and the developer will be here in a little bit, and in going back and looking at this thing, we had a phone call. We've been back and forth with Fernvale Springs Homeowners Association as we know them now. There's a Fernvale Springs private development subdivision that connects to this or backs up to this. And that development was created in 2003. So Fernvale Springs is just a condo unit. It's on its own. It was 5.4 acres at the time. It has a number of homes on there. So if you're looking at the map, and I'll kind of direct behind you, this pointer doesn't pick up on here, but this is development right here. This is the condo unit. Their road comes through here, makes its way out to the main road here. It's been in existence for some time, and that development was Fernvale Springs condo unit in, or condo development on its own. There was not a Phase 2 of Fernvale Springs. Fernvale is a standalone development as it exists. The subdivision is long built out. It's full. It's been full for some time. Tim Mangrum, the developer on what you have before you tonight, was the developer on that at the time. So that subdivision was not designed to connect to any other subdivision, right? It was built, if you see the property line to the bottom of the screen, to the bottom of the drawing that you have before you, that property line wasn't originally designed, if the property line's here, you had a condo building here, condo building here, condo building here, with a parking lot here that served all of those units. Since that time, there have been some changes to where this road was added. The configuration was changed. So now this road comes into the subdivision, makes its way here, and enters the subdivision as it normally would. But that's a private development. That's not a public development, and those are not public streets. So the Townhome Association owns the streets, the infrastructure, the footprint of the subdivision. And then the individual interior walls of the condos are owned by the individual owners. So with that, the description of this being Fernvale Springs Phase 2, while they can call it Fernvale Springs Phase 2 if they choose, it is actually not Phase 2 of the existing subdivision. The existing subdivision is totally, fully, and completely separate in every way from the project you see in front of you. So they can call it what they want, but it's not a Phase 2 of the existing. There was no Phase 2 as we see it from the existing. That's just a wooded area that was a parcel.
But it's going to be connected.
Maybe, possibly. We don't, that's what we're, so know that these two are connected. They're calling it Fernvale Springs Phase 2, but there never was this as a part of being Phase 2.
Separate everything.
Separate parcel, people. Other than a property line that they share, there's no relation between the two. So the developer, Mr. Mangrum, is proposing that this development be built to include this access point here, so that you would have an access point that goes through what we know as Fernvale Springs to make your way in, meander your way back out, and come back out on the road. There's no formal agreement between the Homeowners Association of Fernvale Springs and Mr. Mangrum's development as it relates to that connectivity. They've been back and forth for a couple of years about who can do what on the footprint of the existing Fernvale Springs. The HOA owns it, but who's responsible for all those things? And the answer is, we don't really know, and honestly, that's not our concern. The Homeowners Association reached out to us last week and asked some questions about this development, what you have proposed. Specifically, are they required to connect to the existing neighborhood? And are they requesting to connect to the existing neighborhood? There was also some question about what was involved in the HOA. Were there any agreements in place between the existing subdivision and the proposed subdivisions for easements, rights of way, connectivity, any other thing? The Homeowners Association responded back and said, "There was none of, there's none of that on file anywhere." So I asked them to send me a copy of their HOA agreement, all of the documents regarding their HOA. They sent me that yesterday. They reached out to us last Wednesday. I sent the follow-up to them. They sent me the HOA documents yesterday and got them around 1:00. Took them home last night, read them. They've not been updated since 2003, since the original subdivision was developed. And there's nothing in those documents anywhere that shows any connectivity between these two subdivisions.
The HOA and the developer?
It's been up here several times with no action for the CD to take because it's private property, it's private development. What the concern was, what the discussion was at the time, specific to that, was that Fernvale Springs as we know it, the developer had never installed a final layer of asphalt. So they were asking for help to have the final layer of asphalt installed. And then they asked follow-up to that. Would the city be agreeable to take ownership of the roads or the infrastructure if the HOA voted to disband or request that it be transferred to the city? So at that time, we explained to them, the resurfacing is a private property issue between you and the developer. You need to address that thing. If after that, at some future date, the HOA desires to abandon ownership of the right-of-way, they would have to petition the city to take ownership of that right-of-way. So far, that's not taken place. But we've had several discussions, yes, to your point, on this, and it's been all over the place. So here we are tonight. So the, I believe it was the treasurer for the HOA met with us today, and one of the residents, we had a meeting at 1:00 today. And their stance at 1:00 today was that the Fernvale Springs Homeowners Association, who again owns the lower parcel, is opposed in every way to connectivity of the two developments.
Do we need, does he need the second entrance for means, like ingress or anything?
He does not. So once they told us that they're adamant that they do not want to have this connectivity, so we went back and did a review. And if he does not have the second access, he's still within the code. He falls under the number. So he, the developer, can do this subdivision, and they could cut this off if they wanted to. There's no requirement from the city that they have connectivity.
But it's built, right? Isn't it, it's built?
It is not built. The lower phase is complete. It's been complete for several years. This is under construction. The road's done, all the other things done. There's a stub street to here, but there's nothing else built.
Has he said why he wants so adamantly?
So that's how we get to this thing. So the developer, as I understand it, has sold a portion of these lots. And it's, it was my, it's, so yeah, so we get there. He wanted to have connectivity of that so they could consider the HOA. So there, in the documents that create this development, it's listed as Fernvale Springs Homeowners Association. There's an existing Fernvale Springs Homeowners Association separate from this on the other side of the property line. How we got to Phase 2, I don't know, but he can name it what he wants because this is not Phase 2 of what currently exists. Totally separate development. Daniel, go ahead.
Just quick research. Back in May of 2018, we had a meeting where they were actually calling this Phase 4 of Fernvale Springs condos. And they showed the connection point down there at the bottom along with like six other units on the other side of the property line, on the south side of the property line.
Correct.
What happened with that?
We don't have any idea.
Okay.
We simply don't know because...
I don't know, yeah, I don't know what...
The last time he was here, he asked for a fit variance.
Yes, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. So in 2018, what prompted some of this was when this was originally done with the original phase name, again, it's in no way related to...
Still Phase 4 back then, it wasn't even?
It wasn't.
It is Phase 4. I did type on the Phase 2. It is Phase 4. You have 1, 2, 3, all in that one development.
But what I'm saying is, but what I'm saying is, this development is not a part of...
Regardless of the number, it's...
Call it what you want.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, that'll be the same thing as us going back and saying, "We're going to build a Western Woods Phase 9."
Yeah.
There is no Western Woods Phase 9, and it doesn't...
Who's telling to change the name of it?
We can't tell them to change it.
Well, we can ask.
I mean, we have three Fairview markets.
Oh, yeah.
So we're in this thing, and we don't really care what the name is or how that goes. Where our central concern is, the development on its own fits. There's no issue with the neighboring development. So there's no issue with either development for what's being proposed in any way. The name's a bit quirky, but that's not our business. What is a concern for us is the Homeowners Association has come back and said that they don't want this connection. That's what they told us at 1:00 today. They leave at 1:45. So we met after that meeting, and we said, "Look, there are a couple of options here, simple options. Option 1 is that this be terminated to just close the loop. It be separate on its own, no harm, no foul. So if we, the city, don't have some document stating that these people agree to this, then we're not going to, I don't think we could rightfully go back and impose that connectivity if a neighboring property owner has clearly told us they don't want the connectivity, right? So we could either request that that connectivity be closed, or someone could produce some document, if Mr. Mangrum can produce some document stating he has, in fact, access to this, to the site, then we would honor the document that says he has access to the site. But we either need a document or a closed loop. We can't impose that thing. Chris?
Is that the point? You said the roads are down right now, so he's, I know, none of the buildings have been...
The roads are installed. The roads are installed as depicted.
And it's either, one, he assumed it was going to be okay, or two, he claims to have documentation but cannot provide that?
Close. I'm getting, yes, you're on the right track.
I'm with the mayor. I remember staff or the board made the HOA come in and validate or discuss this early on.
I'm getting there. It's a long story, so...
I'm happy.
So with that, I called Tim this afternoon as soon as we got out of the meeting, and I described everything to him as I have just described to you. Part of the meeting that we had a couple of years ago now, again, revolved around the current existing Fernvale Springs being upset that the final layer of asphalt had not been installed, right? So they, Mr. Mangrum and the HOA allegedly reportedly cut some unwritten undocumented verbal agreement that if Mr. Mangrum would install in the existing subdivision the second layer of asphalt, then they, the HOA, would be agreeable to this connection that we see on the screen. The problem is, we don't have a document stating that there's an agreement, and we have the Secretary of the Homeowners Association meeting with us today saying, "We don't want this connectivity."
I got one question. I know I'm stopping your brain.
No, you're fine.
Who was the first developer originally on Fernvale?
Tim Mangrum and some partner.
Okay. So he was the first developer who has failed to put the top coat on?
No, he had until that point, but the final layer was installed two years ago, when we get to 2018 discussion. So now we've gotten to some unwritten verbal agreement between Mr. Mangrum and the HOA that if he would go in and install the asphalt, then they would allow connectivity. But there, no one's produced any written agreement that says that's where we are. So now the HOA has said, "We don't want that thing." City, what are you going to do?
Honestly, I think I actually remember that part of that meeting.
So, so as we progress into the thing, the second conversation that has come about is that we came about today was, how was this actually changed? Because this road as a part of Fernvale as we know it doesn't exist and never was drawn to exist. This was supposed to be someone's backyard. The homes border this property line with a shared parking lot here. There's never a drawing for a road in connectivity here.
Except for in 2018?
I'm sorry?
Except for in 2018?
Not from there.
I'm just talking about the Phase 4 drawings.
Yeah, but that's from this perspective.
That's not from the other one.
So there was nothing from the other side that looked like?
Not that we can find anywhere.
Okay.
So, so when I talked to Tim, Tim reached back out to the Homeowners Association today after I talked to him. I just talked to Tim 20 minutes ago. Tim says that he reached out to the Homeowners Association and that the Homeowners Association voted in 2018 to allow for this, this access to take place. Tim's not, Tim's not a party to the Homeowners Association, and he's not a part of that thing. So I said, "Tim, for us, we just need to provide to the city some documentation from someone, somewhere, that this approval does exist." So, so when we get to this agenda item tonight, it's my understanding that there are going to be members of the Homeowners Association who arrive and say, "We don't want this connectivity." Mr. Mangrum's going to arrive and say, "I do want this connectivity." And that somewhere in some document, hopefully, some minutes, something, however formal or informal there are, that there was some memorialization of some discussion of this to be allowed. So the purpose of this was to have you guys not be blindsided when we get some people show up at 7:00 and start having this conversation. You now know all that we know. The matter was brought to us Wednesday. I asked for documentation for that to be sent to me on Thursday and requested a meeting. I got the documentation, the HOA documents and the deed yesterday afternoon, and we had a meeting with two members of the HOA today at 1:00.
Do they have a management company?
They do not. They're self-managed. They said they just retained one, but it doesn't come in.
Doesn't have history then. They don't have 2018 history, minutes from their meetings.
I'm not saying that the HOA didn't have minutes and didn't have meetings. I'm saying it's not professionally managed. I don't know who manages it.
But that's what I'm saying. If you don't have somebody like Gertner and Company, then you, odds are that you just, you have your local people. They haven't kept good books, or they transferred them.
Possibly, I don't know. So for us, and I'll get to question real quick, but for us, as this comes about, the only concerns that staff has, there are no other concerns for anything that we see of substance. We just need to either have a document that proves that Fernvale Springs Phase Infinity is Fernvale Springs North has documented proof of approval to be connected to Fernvale Springs South. If there is no documented proof of that, then our suggestion is to approve this plan, closing this loop, and Mr. Mangrum is agreeable to that thing. I think the ultimate, now, the last part of this, I think the ultimate discussion, the ultimate end game for Mr. Mangrum and possibly the HOA is to figure out which HOA is actually going to manage this development long-term. Is it the HOA from the old subdivision and the HOA from the new subdivision that merge and become a bigger Fernvale Springs? Is it two Fernvale Springs? We don't, we don't know that thing. But our concern when we got this, when they reached out to us, was ensuring that the city, Planning Commission, wasn't approving a private property connection between two private property developments when one of the owners, the original HOA, has verbalized to us they're opposed to the connectivity. So I apologize. You now know all we know, but I didn't want to do this.
Two quick questions.
Yes.
One, so the clock ends tonight. Will make a decision if they don't have documentation and stuff?
That's totally, I don't know what that discussion will be.
But there's no, like, open-ended, close it off unless you're able to provide documentation?
Can we say, like, it's approved if you can provide documentation?
Look at your, you know, put on the updated resolution and see if that just kind of...
So, so in, Chris, go ahead.
Well, you can just your thought.
No, I'm not sure what my thought was.
I mean, he seems agreeable, so like, if 7:00 rolls around and he doesn't have the document one way or the other...
Sure. I think the Planning Commission go back and say, "We approve this contingent upon the closing of that loop," so there'd be no connectivity if you chose to do so.
When he's not got six weeks to show up with it, kind of thing.
We could probably put a time limit on it, right?
Yeah.
And then my next quick question, more, I know you all are doing a better job now, clearly, but what, and it's really hard to dig through all these files, well, is there a checklist of like, oh, there's a connection to old neighborhood? Like, what are we going through as a city to not have this issue again?
Typically, you have a couple, typically, it's not such an issue because you either have approved future phases of the same development, or the connectivity is public streets. It's rare that you're going to have one that's going to be a private property development connecting to a private product development of this standard. I've not seen this before. So if you have public streets and someone wants to connect to public street, particularly if we, the city, have required stub streets as a part of a development, it's very difficult to say you can't connect to a stub city street as a part of a public development.
Yeah, I was just curious if there's like a, you know, always a checklist for every plan or everything that comes across. So it's like, oh, check all the outlet, you know?
Right.
Pull the neighboring class or something.
I'm fairly certain it got deferred because of the HOA, and it came back, and the HOA came, a representative came and spoke in favor, and that's when it got passed. So I'd be curious. I'll probably go tonight and just try and read old minutes or look at videos, but I feel like staff talked about it.
Tim's been developing way too long to not get something ready.
I'd be, one would think.
He operates on a handshake.
He does do that, but he's been developing long enough to know better.
So for me, it was, hey, we just, we just need something to go back. Because again, you may not see this again for 40 years. It's just the way that that goes. Because when we require stub streets, most of the time, or if not all the time, in fact, that's a public, those are going to be public streets and how the development's done. So this is just one where it just happens to be private. And we don't care what the answer is. We're fine with either way. We're just, our overriding concern is to make sure that the existing HOA can't come back to the city and say, "You approved effectively a private property connection to other private property for what will be effectively public use." And we want to, we want to stay out of that.
I got one thing. You said this doesn't exist very often. It does. I live in Cherokee Hills, and the Totti family developed that many years ago. Mr. Totti retained a road right-of-way as private property between Cherokee Hills to the farmland behind us, and it is in his name. It's deeded in his name. It's deeded as a piece of property, not as a street, and it exists as ingress egress to the farm behind it. Now, you could get there from other directions, but he retained it as a private citizen owning private land, not as a road.
The difference being, though, he would be connecting to a public street.
Yes.
So in that instance, we, the city, would then have the ability to go back and say, "We do or don't want this thing," as taxpayer. That's when the Planning Commission could go back and say, "We don't, we, the city, we, the Planning Commission, did not intend for this to be an ingress egress to another larger development." Had we intended to do that, we would have required you to include a stub street, right? The inclusion of a stub street or the inclusion of a note on a plat that says, "Lot number 3 shall, shall in the future be designated as public access right-of-way or some other thing." But if they just own a lot that they chose not to develop for hopes of future, that's not the same. So, so yeah, we want to, we're trying to work through those things and see. So, Chris?
So I might just be missing something in my head here, but I just want to make sure I'm proceeding correctly. If the existing development, the existing development doesn't want the connection...
Good, thank you.
New development doesn't exist yet...
If you will make sure your mic's on, Chris.
...that it does not even know that the location is supposed to be a connection, and it's creating all this mess, why just not go and have the connection? I mean, it was pros and cons, I guess, of putting the connection.
Again, the only thing that's been expressed to me is the discussion of connectivity was related to some sort of combination or inclusion of this HOA management of the thing, I would assume, thinking that you would, can have connectivity because of the larger subdivision.
So the connection, and then you can piggyback off the existing HOA, making...
You could piggyback, you could piggyback without the connectivity. The HOA could still, there would be no requirement that they be able to connect on that street and still share the same homeowners association. So again, we're indifferent to whichever way, whichever plan that they both work. We just want to make sure, for full disclosure, that when this conversation comes up, we're of the opinion that someone needs to produce a document that they have access or whatever amenable middle ground we can get to, to get to that thing. So, and I apologize for putting that on you last minute, but we got it last minute, and I don't want to, it's not quite last minute. So with that, I'll kind of...
Really quick, before you go any further.
Yes, sir.
Unrelated, but I see that we have a COF guest Wi-Fi network now. What's the password for that?
That is an outstanding question. I'll be glad to try and get you that answer.
Thanks, man. Appreciate it.
So with the slope discussion, all the other stuff, I'll turn this over to the staff and technical for that information. So this is kind of you guys' work session at this point, Kevin, I guess. So...
Thank you. Over the last several months, we've had several developments come in. We've talked about some steep slopes. We've said that we're going to bring things before you all to discuss with that. There have been many developments across Fairview that have been created, lots, large and small, with slopes. Several developments we have coming through right now and that we've had in the last little bit have had some of those same questions. Rather than constantly granting variances or overlooking it, staff, we've discussed bringing some options forward, having some discussion, and then probably bringing a resolution in the next month or two for those changes to go, both in the subregs as well as zoning. So a couple of things we've discussed, hoping that with these changes, that we will have less... that we will have less variances, less, uh, questions whenever developer comes in and that we'll have our restrictions, uh, either opened up, tightened up, made available, but just something so that it's a little bit more clear. Um, then I'll go from there. What I would love to hear tonight is some discussion on this. What we have is not perfect. There are things that we will probably still go back and change. But several things that we've discussed, uh, in the office as well as with some other cities, uh, just getting a couple of things out there and just saying how it goes.
The, uh, in the zoning ordinance, there's a section called hillside development standard. That's where all these standards are, are located. Currently, the way it's written is any lot that has 15% or greater slope is deemed a critical lot and fall upon those, those standards. Um, for single and two-family dwelling. Who can, there's two things. One, it requires a site plan during the development, but it also has a minimum lot size. So that's something that we brought forth to you all a couple of times, as Micah said. Where the, the natural slope of the, of the land dictates the minimum lot size. And in some cases, if you've got a one-acre lot, for, for example, that has a 17% slope, by our current standard, that would have to be a three-acre lot to build a single-family home. So that makes it very tricky, especially in Fairview where we have lots of, uh, steep slopes and lots of streams. So if you've got a lot that's, you know, even two acres in size and the, in the back acre is floodplain or it's in a low lot, low line stream, you basically, you can't develop that lot. So rather than focusing just on lot size, we're focusing more on why? Why is that standard there? What's it about? What's it trying to do? And what it's trying to do is protect runoff, protect the natural, natural slope, um, to cut back on erosion, protect our stream banks. So we're trying to come up with, we're working to, working with other cities and also coming up with our own, you know, protection plan of how, how do we want to address this rather than just throwing a lot size on it? Cause that, that's not always the best thing. Cause you can have a three-acre lot and still severely erode a stream bank if you're not protecting it properly. So that's kind of where we're starting. Um, I think the 15% is still a good number. Uh, that would put that grading plan for a specific lot in front of staff. So we can address stormwater concerns and things like that. The lot size is something that some cities will use and others won't, but none can really explain why that's there other than that they probably copied it from a previous layout. So looking at pre-construction, our, our code specifically talks about pre-construction. That's existing slopes, but it doesn't really go too much into detail of post-construction. So what happens when you've got a 15% slope and they go in and wipe out the whole hillside and take all the trees? What's that going to do to the stream? So hitting it with just, not, not just the pre-development, but also the post-development and coming up with standards that will ensure protection of those slopes. So that's kind of where we're, that's where our aim is, is looking at the different categories of pre-construction, post-construction, the slope percentages of each, and coming up with a plan of, okay, if it's a 15%, that's a critical. So we'll have to review, uh, the, the grading and the stormwater onsite, making sure there's not any issues. If it gets up to 33, maybe that's not something that we want to have. If it's a three to one slope, meaning that for every foot, for every three feet, you go this way, you go three, you go one foot up. So that, that's a pretty steep slope. That's typically what you see in a ditch on the side of a road. So trying to find that spot of what, um, what, what do we want to allow to, to protect our, our slopes? And then at the same time, um, looking at tree protection and slope and stream bank protection. All of these things are required in TDEC. And as we move into the MS4 requirement, we're going to have to address all of these as well. So this again is, we've said it a lot of, we're trying to prepare for MS4. This is just one of those extra steps of mitigating our stormwater runoff and, you know, not just quantity, but quantity. Or not just quantity, but also quality. Making sure there's some buffer in there, making sure that you're not running a highway right off into the, into a stream of fish in it. I mean, you got to have some buffer, things like that. So. You know, the goal is to preserve natural vegetation, um, reducing the amount of grading that's needed if we can. Also with development plans, working with engineers to actually grade the lots to what they're going to be rather than what the road needs to be. So, uh, requiring a little more work upfront to be thinking about these things so that we're not behind the cart and you end up with a a mass graded site that's not, it's got a bunch of issues. So.
A couple of the minimums we talked with post-construction, and again, these are changing numbers. Uh, so it's things that we may still work through. Uh, something on a 20% slope, which is five to one. Steep enough to be considered critical, but definitely not unbuildable. Uh, requiring a minimum lot size throughout the 15,000 square foot lot. That's roughly a one-third acre lot. Uh, we can work with that a little bit, but that's, that's still a very buildable slope as long as it is protected. Once you get up to the 25%, which is a four to one, uh, that, that maybe is something that we don't have within the building envelope. So you can still have slopes of four to one on your, your site, uh, even on your building site. But your building envelope, so where the house can go on your lot. Uh, changing that to where anything with a slope greater than 25% that that's not, uh, that's not allowed. And that would be possibly pre-construction as well as post, uh, trying to cut down on some of the disturbance. Uh, with the 20%, something we've discussed as well is for the pre-construction number. Uh, requiring vegetation and trees to remain. You're going to have to cut trees. There are trees that have to go. That's just part of it. Vegetation has to go. That's part of it. But, uh, once you get to some of the slopes, being able to retain what's natural vegetation helps preserve slopes, uh, on the fact that they already have that root system. So that helps. But also it's really hard to grade where you have to leave a tree. So that's, uh, one thing that we're definitely looking at. Once you get to a three to one slope, like Kevin said, a lot of your ditches are three to one. We see a lot of our detention ponds, uh, the banks going down to those. Several times that you'll see on the plans, easements. So really any of your stormwater conveyance, a lot of that is a three to one slope. And like Kevin said, that's up a foot for going over three. If you're talking three feet, that's not that big of a deal. But once you start talking 12 and 15 linear feet, you may be four and five foot of grade change in that. Uh, so, uh, requiring sod in that. It does add a little bit upfront for the developer, but having that sod there creates an already rooted grass system that helps preserve those slopes. So that's something that we've discussed. And then once you get over that three to one, over the 33, up to the roughly 50%, which is a two to one. Having grade-changing devices have to be shown on those critical lot plans, uh, and have the city engineer looking over those. So Kevin, look over those. Grade-changing devices, a lot of times are retaining walls. That's not the only option, but something so that slopes are protected by putting in some walls or some other means to, uh, to reduce the slope excuse me, of actual ground level while still having that change in elevation. There are some pretty significant ways of doing so and maintaining, uh, the, the stability of those slopes. So that's something that we're, we're trying to do. Again, preserving natural vegetation is one of the best ways to, uh, control your runoff, but also to preserve those slopes. Uh, whenever we can have the grass, the, uh, brush, if there's brush in some of those areas, trees, whatever that may be left on some of those sites, once you get to some of the steeper ones, that definitely helps. Uh, I can say as well as with the roots, but also with the keeping machines off of it.
Do we have a tree bank?
We have a tree bank. Uh, historically, the tree bank, tree discussions has been, uh, kept to industrial and commercial sites. Uh, rarely has that been brought into the residential side. There are questions with our regs, whether that is the intent or not for those residential sites. Uh, and that's something that with this discussion, I want to change. Um, that's why we started off with the slope discussion and then quickly changed that over to the slope and tree protection. Uh, I think they work very well together and that's something that I want to bring in as well. Uh, with that is once we get the slopes figured out, a retention of trees. And there's been discussion both ways of, uh, the preservation of trees or replanting of trees. To me, uh, the more you preserve, the better because that root system is already there. You're not coming out with a five-gallon bucket root. Uh, so that's something that we're definitely looking at as a way to, uh, help the developers in a means that they want to help us with the trees.
Micah, y'all mentioned earlier, or alluded to in the first of this conversation, uh, uh, pre-construction, post-construction.
Yes.
And as the engineers prepare their, their plats, they do have to do site drainage for every, each and every lot. So then if they sell those lots off to individuals without accomplishing that, then you have people that are not qualified.
That's right.
to do the grading and sloping for the drainage. That's what's been the problem out here, in my opinion, all along.
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping that you're saying that the building, building envelope or pad for each individual resident that's going on these pieces of property should be completed by the developer, not the individual builder that they sell the lots off to.
That is our greatest intent right now.
That's a great.
If you do that, you solve your problems. But if you don't do that, then you're going to play the game when people are going to be in, in a passive mode, not complying because they, they're not qualified. And you're going to lose trees. You're going to lose your slope. And then you're going to have a runoff issue. And to me, you have to do what you said in the beginning there.
Yes, sir.
And as a part of that, not, we, we would include, and we already talked about this, we include a pre-inspection at the time someone comes in to propose a building on that lot. So when they come in to do that, the pre-inspection for that would require a site visit by our staff to go out and make sure that it meets those pre-approved requirements. And then it is the same at the end of that construction as well. So that will be a part of the permitting process from the very beginning, a pre and post inspection on.
We've, we've already implemented that.
Yeah, cause if you've got your drainage all set up or your building envelope or pad, and then somebody's built next door to it or two doors down, and they've run tractors, forklifts and, and everything else around it and destroyed that drainage slopage, 10% to 10 feet or whatever you, you've set up, then when the guy buys this new pad, he's got, should start with a clean, fresh, positive slate. And, uh, so yeah, you're on the right path.
Is there no requirement as to who is?
It is.
There is, that engineer require a, uh, that can design drainage, not just survey or.
So right now, the way I've got it is that, um, the, all site drainage ca, caucks have to be provided by an engineer. They have to be put designers two through 100. So they have to take it through the wringer and they have to look at it all the way through. The, the, the issue, I guess, one of the fixes, of course, is loo, is looking at the grading during construction plans. For the way it's laid out right now, the only time we see, if it's not done at the construction plans, is if it is a critical lot. Then we can actually address the grading. So with this, we'll, we'll, so now that we've got that initial inspection. Yeah. Right.
I will say I've been at the city five years this month, actually. So I'm finally hitting that five-year pin. The inspections we have made in the last 12 months far exceed any we did on my side in the previous four, uh, four years. And that's not the building inspections, but the, the grading, the sites and going through that. Uh, we are making a major push to start before the first piece of equipment comes out through that entire process to be onsite, uh, be with the developers. All the developers' numbers are almost speed dial now, uh, but we have made that a, a goal. And I think we're going pretty good with it right now to be onsite through the entire process to catch a lot of these issues while they're ongoing. Uh, some things you do have are, uh, you've got an approved set of plans, great set of plans. You get there and the grading is completely different. We, we have issues with that, but being able to do these inspections throughout, uh, we're, we're catching a lot of that on the front end. And then, uh, we've just started, I guess, in the last couple of weeks, that engineering staff will go out and like Scott had said, uh, before any, uh, building is started. And then after that building is finished before final CEO, to look at, uh, all of the grading to make sure it meets site plan for the development as well as, uh, any grading for, for those needs.
I'm hearing positive things here. I really like it and.
Well, it's not without resistance because.
Oh, I'm sure it isn't because.
There's a lot of resistance.
I know a lot of developers would just soon hire a guy to do site design and stuff, but not also put in the contract for him to be responsible for the physical work. So therefore you should be able to say to the developer, you've got a site engineer. He's signed up on these things. We're coming to him for the discrepancies. And he's going to have to get out of his chair, out of his truck and manage what he's designed. And that's what he should have a contract to do, not just have somebody draw him some, uh, elevations and, uh, stuff, site plan and sign off on it. But I didn't get the other part of that contract. And he should have the other part of that contract.
Well, and, and I have no doubt that there are going to be some projects that will get changed to the point where they have to come back before this, this group. I mean, where things got approved as they were, this is, this is how you want to grade it. Okay, it works. You get out there and they, they change it and it's going to have to come back.
It's not there, is it? Yeah.
Something else we're looking at and not getting too deep into it because, uh, TDEC has an entire book on it. Through the process of construction, uh, other means of preserving the slopes. Uh, EPSC's huge deal, uh, trying to do, whether it's silt fence or bags or snakes or whatever, the eels, everything that you've got through all of this process. Those all work great. We have a developer right now that, uh, had some concerns with one of his lots, uh, was concerned of some major runoff. And before he got his road pads ready, called us and said, I'm putting seed and straw down. Want you all to come look at that. And has worked with us to, to get some early side of the, the seed down. Uh, with that, already has grass growing and from our inspections as well as from some people that are around that area, have noticed the difference that that's made. Uh, just instead of having one big open lot, working through the process to, to keep, uh, things onsite. So, uh, several, several ways that we're looking at doing some, uh, preservations during construction as well. So those may or may not be written out once they come to you, but those are some definitely things we're looking at right now.
So yeah, the main thing is getting the ground covered as soon as, as soon as absolutely possible. Um, to where the energy from a raindrop is not going to destroy the ground. And then getting vegetation in place so that it can start infiltrating as, as best as it can. So whether that's grass or sod, sod obviously is the quickest. Um, it may not be the case in every single scenario, but on steep slopes, you need to, if you don't protect that slope, it's going to get eroded away real quick. So that, there's a lot of different stabilization practices during construction, but also post-construction. So that's some we're looking at too.
Yeah, she's an asset.
Yeah.
It, it has been great the last, I guess, month now that she's been around. Look, I'll stop talking nice about you. Having, with, when Kevin came on, having some outside eyes come in, and I think a lot of things changed at that point. Once Sarah came in, just saying, look, these are some other ways of looking at it. I hope we don't add engineers like three and four times a year, all the time. It might get a little bit full of an office. But having some fresh eyes see things, bringing some different manners of doing things. It's, it has been great having, having her here and definitely been eye-opening and major help. That's all I have. I don't know if you have anything else? Do y'all have any? Yes, I see hands.
Of course I have a question, right? What, kind of going back to this tree bank thing, at least the only cities that I see even my own lots, is the ones that are deeply financed. For like, you have to have the, you know, the big metal, metal fence up under the drip line or any, and like mark it off, and having some real repercussions to it. And so it's not just running with the groups, some of them died in five years. Is that part of this, or is that more the tree slope, tree?
It is.
Preservation?
The tree protection is part of it, not just preservation, but also protection. And there, there are some, there is some language in our code that does have tree protection. But I think as far as standards go, we can actually call, we can actually work on a standard for that. To say, this is the type of fence you have to use.
Per caliber tree that you damaged, it's this doc, I mean.
That's right.
Or bring in an erdor forester.
I don't think so.
I mean, there's just some, there are some cities in the local area that are some really well-thought-out ones already. They're easy to steal, more or less. But.
I'm a fan of that.
So I was just thinking, that's just one of those ones that I've seen many a time. And I know, I think, only it might be the one that I really got into with it, but they require you, like the builder to almost provide the, from the same engineer, the check calculations, like they put, instead of y'all doing more work, can we put it back on being provided the checks and balances?
You can accept their engineer, you, you can go back and put in there.
You can put in there that you will accept their engineer's stamp and hope, and that stamp is your insurance.
But I just think, you know, we keep talking about like things that we want, it's still a small city. There's still some things that you can kind of outsource and then just visually glance and go, okay, that's probably right. It's not, you know, and then that professional stamp is a good check. But some of these critical lots, I think that's part of the standard, is that there is a check of post-construction.
Absolutely. And we've worked on some of those things, for, it's not to that standard, but like presented, approved roll street, we've gotten where a couple of times, we've accepted the engineer, you know, their engineer go out and stamp and do that thing. So we're trying to incorporate as much of that as we can, but it's just baby steps until we figure out how that works.
So do I understand correctly that some of these things are the MS4 requirements that we're going to head start on?
Yes, both water quality and water quantity. So all things we've got to, we'll, we'll have to start policing a whole lot more. We're, we're doing that now, but once we become MS4, it'll be a requirement.
What is that timeline?
It's a, it's population-driven. TDEC can actually, if they think that we have gone to that level at 10,000 people, they can actually impose that on the city. If we, if we request it, they would obviously accept that. But, I mean, it's kind of up to TDEC right now.
Have we gotten our census results back?
I believe the number, it was 9,300 and something. I believe it was 9,340, 9,347.
Not 9,999.
So, so we know we're on the threshold for what that is. I think they could come back and say, hey, look, we recognize you're at 9,347, but the number of homes that you have proposed on the book that are active, not just what might happen. I think they could come back and say, okay, you're, we're now going to deem you, that you are. I don't know that we would or wouldn't welcome that. I think it gives us some teeth, some authority to do some work. So to that extent, it helps. But that's the purpose of all of this work, is to try and get ahead of, ahead of some of that.
Outside of this discussion, I've, something I've put together with Sarah and Micah and Scott is stormwater ordinance that will prepare us for that. So once that gets all set in place, plus this, everything will kind of fit together and be a consistent approach.
And that document is substantially complete. I have it on my desk. We'll read that, go through the process, get that to the attorneys, make sure that cleaned up. But that, that work is already done. So we're much closer than we were. And then we got a good portion of our federal stimulus money that we've allocated to stormwater. That hit the bank last week. So we're prepared now to go back and implement, finish the creation of that plan and start implementing some of that work. So we're, it's, it's going our way right now. We hope that continues.
And all the critical lots just get reviewed by y'all, or that's, I know we had one come back for something that comes in front of us as well, or just in front of y'all, the critical lots, when they do the site plan?
For the individual lot, I don't believe, I don't believe that, as long as the individual lot didn't substantially change the overall development drainage, it, it would be established.
So it's just those unusual ones, because it was like in a floodplain that wasn't a floodplain?
That's, yeah, that's a different one, for sure.
Okay.
Now, you're not going to try to protect any, like, particular trees, like old trees, or the large trees, or anything like that, or are you going to put anything in there like that?
A lot of it will be size-determined. We currently have a protection for historic trees. What is a historic tree? That's kind of gray. If we're talking a hundred-year-old tree that an arborist comes out and deems need to be protected, that's definitely one we do. It was the last month or two months ago, we had a site plan that came forward. And one of the conditions was that arborists coming out and making recommendations. That came back about two weeks ago. Arborists said that the tree was in good health and needed to be protected. So they are changing that plan right now. Very slight changes, but they are doing a couple of changes to protect that and then showing all of that protection for that tree. And I think they said it was right at a hundred, 120-year-old tree, so.
How long has that been in place, that, that rule?
Not long.
Not long?
Uh, I couldn't.
Weeks, years, months?
More than weeks and months, but I don't know.
More, more, when, how long has it been enforced, not necessarily how long it's been in place.
Because when Taco Bell was built, it was not enforced. Because Taco Bell wanted to take down that 200-year-old tree.
I don't know when Taco Bell was built. I think it was the following day that that rule went into place. I, I don't know when that was. Very similar to the Building Code book, there are a lot of words in a book about this thick. You do your absolute best to make sure every project meets those requirements. There are things that get overlooked. I don't know if that was something that was on the books at that time or not. Anytime you kick a rock, you find several more rocks underneath it. That's what we've found going into some of our regs. But any of these developments that we start digging into, you see more things. And so we, we enforce what we know to enforce. We are in the regs daily. So when we see something that we may not have seen before, it's, hey, have you seen this? And if y'all came to our office, you would wonder what all goes on, because I'll be in mine, Kevin will be in his, Sarah will be over, and we'll just be like yelling back and forth, hey, have y'all seen this? How, how exactly do you read it? So that, that's where we've seen some of this stuff come through. So when it came through, I don't know. When it was enforced, I don't know. What we know to enforce, we do our best at.
So when a developer takes down multiple huge trees, what is our recourse in that situation?
We try to keep that from happening on the beginning.
Well, that's, that's part of the, of adjusting our retention policy of trees, doing a site survey and having them tell us what's there. Then whenever we do our reviews, we can, we can see it then.
That's right, because, because most of that's been on the commercial side.
That's right.
Yeah.
So that, that's not been on the residential side. So there, we did make a change some while back now, where you don't have to go in and count every tree. You can take a sample of those and identify what those are. So we're trying to progress on that. As this goes, then that will include some of the residential, and you make sure you're protecting those. But the original intent and application of that has been the commercial side to offset one that we have also discussed internally and in a couple of meetings with, with some of the elected officials, is including landscape plans, individual landscape plans for individual lots as a part of the requirement for the, for the CO, the building permit, all such as that. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't only be concerned with the square footage, electrical, all of that, but you would require a certain amount or percentage of, of impervious surface, as an example. You may require a certain percentage or number of square feet of that as vegetation. So you'd have to go in and install your flower beds, trees, calipari-sized trees, that sort of thing, and make sure you're putting those back. So in the event a, a property is clear-cut, or in the event that a property is developed and it's untreated to begin with, once you go back and do that, you create that by requiring all of your inspections to include your landscape plan for the individual lot and not necessarily the total gross subdivision, so.
Thank you.
With that, we'll take just a couple of minutes break, unless, Mr. Brother, you have some, something. I will tell you that this should be the last meeting that you meet in this setup. This work is getting complete, we have some of this, getting complete, we have some of this work done. It'll take place in the next couple of weeks. We have the final pieces of the carpet coming in this Friday to be installed, and the cabinets and everything else will come in. So next meeting, you should see the finished project for the diase that you'll be working on there. So with that, we'll take a few minutes break and get into seven.
Well, I think we're going to replace those. I, I do think that, I think we're replacing those.